Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks so much for joining us. Please be seated. I trust while you've been waiting, you've had a moment to read our acknowledgement to our friends and neighbors with the Squamish Slade with Tooth. The Squamish Slade with Tooth and Musqueam. That was an interesting little repeat. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. And Heather Keith will lead us through an introduction. But first, though, we should ask for our corporate officer to read the notices.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. I will do so on behalf of the corporate officer. Council is convening this public hearing to consider and receive submissions regarding proposed zoning bylaw number four, six, six, two, twenty ten. Amendment bylaw number five, three, eight, seven, twenty twenty five regarding the urban forest management plan. Anyone who believes their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be heard and/or may provide a written submission, either in person or via email to correspondence at westvancouver.ca. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. Council members may ask questions of you following your presentation, but council's function during this public hearing is to listen to the views of the public and not to debate the proposed bylaw. After the public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations. Your only opportunity to comment on the proposed bylaw is during this public hearing. Council is not permitted to receive further submissions once the public hearing has closed. Council has received documents which are available for the public to view. A hard copy of these may be obtained from the corporate officer during the public hearing. The documents can also be viewed online at westvancouver.ca/news/notices. Please note that the online copy of the documents do not include any items received after noon today. To maintain order and to ensure everyone has an opportunity to be heard, council has established these rules of procedure. First, a speakers list has been established. For those attending in person, you may place your name on the list at any time throughout the public hearing. If you're speaking from prepared remarks, council requests that a copy be provided to the corporate officer. To participate via Zoom, please phone six oh four nine two five seven zero zero four and provide your name and telephone number to staff who will add you to the speakers list. When it is your turn to address council, staff will allow you to unmute your microphone and turn on your webcam in order to provide you with your public input opportunity. Please note that staff are not in a position to provide you with a specific time slot when you register to speak, so we ask that you be available for the duration of the public hearing. Second, council requests that you please begin your remarks by providing your name and the municipality of your residence. If you're speaking on behalf of some other person or organization, please identify the name of that person or organization. Third, please limit your remarks to five minutes and to the subject of the proposed bylaw. Please be respectful to others. And finally, after everyone has spoken once, you will have an opportunity to speak subsequent times to provide additional information if you wish. Please follow the process outlined a moment ago to be re-added to the speakers list. If you have any concerns about the rules of the hearing, please address your comments to the chair. We have received one report on this item, Mayor Sager, and twenty-two written submissions. We've got another two. They're sitting in front of you in the horseshoe here. Council did set the date for this public hearing back on September fifteen. The statutory notice of public hearing was run in the North Shore News on October eighth and fifteen. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Ms. Keith, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and council and members of the public. I'm here today to present proposed landscaping amendments to the zoning bylaw for new single-family developments in support of the urban forest management plan. Just for clarity, as, as it was just mentioned, staff came forward with amendments to various bylaws in support of the urban forest management plan on September fifteenth. The public hearing tonight is only for the amendment to the zoning bylaw, which is focused on tree retention and replacement for developing properties. This can proceed independently of the other bylaw amendments that are more related to tree protection on private property and boulevards. Under the Local Government Act, a public hearing is required for changes to the zoning bylaw, but not for the other bylaw amendments that were discussed on September fifteenth prior to subsequent readings and adoptions. So tonight I'll only be speaking to the zoning bylaw amendments and not to the other bylaw amendments. So I'll just give a little background and then go through the zoning bylaw amendments particularly related to updated landscaping requirements. Within that, there's a proposed minimum tree density requirement concept in which I'll go into further in depth. So in 2021, we had a tree canopy cover analysis completed and we had a fifty-one percent tree canopy cover over the entire district. Compared to 2018, when the analysis was previously done, there was a loss of tree canopy cover of two percent across the entire district. In March of 2024, the urban forest management plan was approved by council, which gave a target over the next fifteen years to achieve a fifty-two percent canopy cover, so an increase of one percent from 2021. Within the plan, there was fifty-nine actions. The short-term actions for the next one to five years were focused primarily on canopy cover loss on private properties due to redevelopment, so essentially tree loss due to land clearing. Last year, approximately this time, council gave direction to staff focus on actions to grow the urban forest by increasing tree replacement and planting requirements, particularly for developing properties via the zoning bylaw. So these proposed bylaw amendments are in response to the actions outlined in the urban forest management plan and council directions. So right now, there is a section of the zoning bylaw that outlines the landscaping requirements for single-family dwellings for, for new developments. And so the bylaw amendments proposed tonight include landscaping improvements to improve tree canopy cover post-construction. So the first one would be to require a sign-off by the landscaper who prepared the plan to ensure that the landscaping was done as per the plan. Most importantly, there were other requirements in the bylaw amendments to what the landscaping plan would need to include and laying out the number of planted trees, the retained trees, soil volume and spacing requirements, as well as the permeable area that's on-site post-construction. The two largest components of the bylaw amendments include that a minimum tree density concept, so the requirement to plant or retain a certain number of trees on a lot post-development, and this is based on a lot size, so I'll go into more detail on that in a second. The second would be to look at the percent permeable area for the entire lot. So right now, under the zoning bylaw for landscaping, the permeable area requirements are for the front yard setback. It's generally fifty percent of the front setback area would be needed to be permeable. This would extend those requirements to look at the entire lot. This is consistent with quite a few other municipalities that have permeable area requirements. They look at the entire lot and not just the front yard. And this would allow more area to grow trees for stormwater management, to retain rainfall and, and those sorts of things. And I'll get a bit more into that in a second. So if you look at the minimum tree density requirement, we have a canopy cover target of fifty-two percent across all types of land in the district. This is equal to eighty trees per hectare. That being said, recognizing that on private property, we can't achieve that type of canopy cover target just given the amount of buildings that are on private property. So the sub-target for residential properties is forty percent canopy cover target, which is sixty-two trees per hectare. So just point out, most of our lots are much smaller than a hectare. So this doesn't mean that you would be required to have sixty-two trees planted on your property. We just would, the zoning bylaw amendment has a table showing the size of a lot and how many trees that you would need to have on that lot post-construction. And so this can be a combination of planted trees or retained trees on your lot. You, if, if it's retained trees, they would need to be greater than twenty centimeters in diameter, or you can plant trees that we know would reach a medium or large size on maturity. So on the right-hand side of the slide, it's just showing just a couple of examples, and these are existing lots in West Vancouver. These are showing that lots, the number of trees. So if you look at the top one, which I can't quite see because the, one second, let me see if I can just, nope, I can't move that over. So the, okay, I'm going to go to the middle one because I can't quite see it anyways. It doesn't matter. Okay, so for the middle one, the lot size is eight hundred and forty-seven square meters, which is point zero eight five hectare. So if you look at, if it's sixty-two trees for one hectare, it's four trees needed for this size of lot. Right now, or there's five trees needed for this size of lot. Right now, there's four trees on that property already. So if they redevelop that lot, they would need to have five trees on that lot. If you look at the bottom example, the lot size, for the lot size, they would need six trees to meet their tree density requirement. And right now, on that lot, there is already six trees. So it's showing that most of the lots right now that are existing in West Vancouver are either at the minimum tree density requirement or exceeding it. And the analysis that we did showed that over ninety percent of the lots are already achieving this tree densities, minimum tree density requirement. So there's quite a few benefits to the tree density requirement. It will help the district reach our tree canopy cover target. It will hopefully alleviate the land clearing for new houses and retain as many trees as possible to meet this tree density requirement. We do know that many of the existing properties are already exceeding the minimum tree density requirement, so it is achievable. It's a realistic goal. But it also starts to make an equitable distribution of the canopy across the district. We do know that some neighborhoods have much lower tree canopy cover than other neighborhoods, and this will start to even it out. In areas where there's properties with quite a few trees, you know, we do know out to the west that there's trees, properties that have forty, twenty to forty trees. This would actually not penalize them because they may not need to plant any more trees if they redeveloped and kept some of their trees. It also incentivizes keeping trees on your lot so that you don't have to increase your landscaping costs at development. But it also, you know, when we proposed the other bylaw amendments, there we did propose a compensation payment mechanism that you weren't able to plant the trees on your lot, that you could contribute to tree planting on public land, so this would align with that as well to ensure that if trees can't be planted on a private property, then we can, it would support tree planting on public lands. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Members of council, any questions? Counselor Thompson, please.
Thank you. Yes, a couple of things. One is quite recently, thank you, the province's table, Bill twenty-five. And for the public, as you know, when they presented Bill forty-four, which allows you to build four to six units per, per lot, we, we, our staff worked it out that it only actually applied to some three hundred-plus lots in our community, and the rest were acceptable because we allowed three units, a main house and accessory building and a suite. Bill twenty-five seeks to reverse that so that we will have to apply four to six lots in every residential lot in West Vancouver. So when I look at a thirty percent permeability, if we come under that cloak, what does that look like with the setbacks? And perhaps Mr. Bailey could speak to it a bit because the province also dictates the setbacks, I believe, and how much lot coverage.
So through, through the mayor to Counselor Thompson, I can let Mr. Bailey chime in. But just to clarify, these proposed amendments are only if you're building a single-family dwelling. So it wouldn't apply to any multifamily dwellings. So if they were to expand the number of units on a lot, this would not apply to it. We wanted to start small. We recognize that density is a requirement, and so we, so these are just, if you're building a single-family house.
Sorry, I missed that. Yeah, thank you. The other one is this concept of evening it out. Can you talk about that a little more? Just, it concerns me a bit just because our geography is so different across. How do you see a lot in Ambleside evening out comparing to something in Altamont?
So generally, the lots in Ambleside are smaller, so they would have less, they would have a, their requirement to plant a certain number of trees would be small, lower because they have smaller lot sizes. But often, we're seeing with new developments is that no trees are being planted or very few. And this would just allow, require them to plant at least the number of trees that they could have on their lots for the size that they are. First, conversely, to the west, as you mentioned, in Altamont, where the lot sizes are quite big, generally, many of those lots already have quite a few trees. So if they were to redevelop, they may not need to maintain that many more, that many trees. They could, they may be okay with just having less. So it starts to grow a canopy in areas that are much needed, that are lacking some, but it doesn't, you know, require extensive more planting in areas that are already heavily treed.
Yeah, and I guess my only concern about particularly Altamont is sometimes you can have one tree that covers half a lot, the canopy. And so to put a number on it is a little concerning to me.
So the requirements, so you would choose a tree, if it was already greater than twenty centimeters in diameter, it counts as a tree. And then to select new trees to grow, they would be at a medium-sized tree. So the updated tree species list, as proposed in the tree bylaw amendment that came forward on September fifteenth, breaks the trees' maturity down in terms of canopy size and height. So you could choose from the list that would have a, you know, a medium-sized canopy for your lot. So yes, recognizing that some canopies are larger than others, you could work, you could determine using the tree species list, what would be applicable for your property and what size could work for your property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gambioli, please.
Yeah, so just a few questions. First of all, I've had a number of questions by email about the twenty-centimeter DBH. That is not part of our discussions tonight.
Through the mayor to Counselor Gambioli, no, that would be an amendment to the tree bylaw, and this is, a public hearing is only for the zoning bylaw amendment.
And so when is that going to be coming forward?
We're looking at mid-November, November seventeenth.
November seventeenth. It's going to be a long meeting on November seventeenth.
What's your birthday?
Darn it. Okay, so my other question is the cash-in-lu mechanism. There's not a lot of detail about how those funds will be spent exactly. Is there, is there, can you give us any more detail on that, please?
So through the mayor to Counselor Gambioli, so the other bylaw amendments that were brought forward on September fifteenth, the cash-in-lu payment mechanism was put into the tree bylaw for consideration. It works better there because even for replanting requirements, if you were removing a tree on your existing property. And then there was an amendment to the Environmental Reserve Fund bylaw, which allowed that money to be redirected into the Environmental Reserve Fund. And that, that, those funds can only be used for, to address climate change or protection of natural environment. So the intention would be to use those funds to, for public tree planting or to, you know, continue to fund the yard tree planting program that we do on an annual basis or school tree planting. So really ensuring that we're allocating that specifically to our natural assets or tree work.
Okay, that's fantastic. I noticed the other day up at the school, by the way, the three big maple trees that were planted last year, they look fantastic. That's going to be, that's such a great legacy, the planting that we did last year. The okay, no, that's a question, sorry. Oh, yeah, the, the, the tree density replacement requirements. Why are they not applying to like, like large house renovations? You know, a lot of, well, these days, there are pretty significant renovations that are going on and in, on, on single-family lots, and these don't apply, so we're not considering those.
Through the mayor, would you, do you mean renovations, like additions to new homes that would expand beyond?
Right.
We, we haven't looked at that yet. That becomes a little bit more complicated to determine the threshold of when that would be, when you would enact the tree density requirement. But certainly, I think the intent was that staff wanted to start with a concept specifically for new builds and then, and then move on to the next steps if this proves successful. Through our tree canopy analysis, we, most of the loss is related to the building of new homes. But certainly, as I understand, there are more renovations happening to existing homes now. So it could be the next step that we would need to look at if we move forward with this.
Okay, that's, sounds like that's going to be a while. And finally, in terms of the tree density issue, what, what are the, what are the impact? What are the sort of long-term or medium-term implications for the future? I mean, you know, someone plants five little trees, and what happens if they die? You know, do we come back and inspect? Is there some kind of withholding of permit money or something?
So through the mayor, right now, there is a security deposit collected for landscaping for new developments. That's typically returned to the owner once the final inspection is completed for the building permit and signed off. It's not held for a period of time. We do hold a security for environmental development permits where there is replanting required in riparian areas for creeks. We do hold a security deposit for a year and then inspect again to ensure that is a difficult component, the follow-up inspection. But we could look at whether we, you know, how long we hold security deposits. But at this time, it's only held until the building permit is closed.
I think it's, you know, is that a change that can be made relatively easily after this public hearing? Or, no, I mean, that's just a sort of a operational.
I could, I could look into it. I'm not sure if that security deposit is written into a different bylaw, like the building bylaw. Fees and charges by law, so we would, we would need to look into that, but we could follow up on that.
Good old fees and charges by law. You know, it's just a bit, it's very different from the building, whether the building is safe to be inhabited, et cetera. It's, it's, you know, it's a bit rare. It's a bit different, right? The tree issue, you don't know whether a tree is going to live for two or three years after you plant it, really. And if it's that important, then I think that we should, we should note that down and maybe make some improvements there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gambioli. Counselor Watt, please.
Yeah, so a couple of comments and some questions. We received a late letter today, and it echoed some of the thoughts that I've had over time regarding cedars. You know, and as the letter writer pointed out, that our own fire department is not comfortable with cedars as a perimeter planting. So is, has there been a consideration to remove that?
Through the mayor to Counselor Watt, we, we could consider that certainly in the wildfire development permit area. That is something that we consider in terms of planting new coniferous or cedar trees. So we do restrict that for those properties, but that is a, only approximately five thousand properties in the district. You know, if we looked at expanding that or looking at sort of fire smart landscaping requirements across the entire district, that could be a consideration. And certainly, something that was, in the next month or so, we're coming forward with the updated Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan and certainly Fire Smart Landscaping's mentioned in that as a recommendation to review and update, so that, that could be considered.
Okay, thank you. And one of the things I also wanted to point out, you know, it's fantastic that we are going forward with this. And I also want to point out, you know, one of the pluses. We have fifty-one percent canopy, the recommended in an urban setting is forty percent. And other than, and more, Belkarra, Lions Bay and Bowen Island, we are coming out on top, so that is a positive. Sorry, I have a couple of other notes. Now, you also mentioned that across the entire district, we have fifty-one percent. But when I go into Metro Vancouver reports from the Air Quality and Climate Committee in 2020, it separated that out and said, in our entire district, we have seventy-seven percent canopy, maybe one or two percent less. So weirdly, in that same report, it said we had sixty-two percent coverage within the regional core. But obviously, we would probably have a better indicator. So anyway, again, just pointing out one of the
I, I think the reason you'll get these different measurements is it, it depends what you're considering is within the district. If you're considering the built-up area of the district, that's very different than if you consider our old growth forest and the cypress, all of the park we've just, all of the land we've dedicated as park. That's not within Ms. Keith's number of fifty-two.
No, I know, but you, you did say within our jurisdictional boundaries, so I know I'm, I'm
I swear, all correct, it's between, it's within fifty-one percent within the urban containment boundary, yeah.
Okay.
So it's, it's difficult. There's been a few analyses that have been done comparing apples to apples and the resolution of the LiDAR data. It's, it's, they're sometimes not always aligned for sure, but yeah.
Okay, and there's something I didn't understand. In the report, it said, the report to council states, there are no financial implications to the district with respect to the proposed bylaw amendments included in this report. But then number two in that section, something we voted on in March twenty twenty-four, stated that staff be directed to incorporate the recommendations in the urban forest management plan into annual work plans and request supportive funding. So I, I don't know if I'm misreading or misunderstanding.
So through the mayor, Counselor Watt, the proposed bylaw amendments to the zoning, what we've proposed now, there's no financial implications, meaning that there's no cost to the district. We might see increased revenue fees, and staff feel that we can accommodate these changes with existing staff. What you're talking about is of the fifty-nine actions for the urban forest management, some will require additional budget from the Environmental Reserve Fund, and, and that would be incorporated into annual work plans. But not every single item would require.
Okay, excellent, and I really appreciate the thirty percent permeable surface. That's fantastic. I did watch a neighbor once pave over the backyard several years ago, and I reported it, and they said, there's nothing we can do. It's not the front. So that is excellent, and bear with me. I'm sorry, I've got a few notes here, questions. Apologies. Oh, yeah, so you did amend the tree, the boulevard hedge trimming in there. It seemed more clear to me this time not to cut, but people are allowed to trim because I would have had to report my entire block in the last three weeks. You know, it got to a point where I was wondering where the reporting portal was because all my neighbors have been You know, it got to a point where I was wondering where the reporting portal was because all my neighbors have been out trimming their boulevard hedges. But what is still in there, I noticed, and I'd also have to report three of my neighbors in the last two weeks. I saw them on step ladders trimming branches near their houses. So I struggle with that. We've got serious bylaw officer issues. And that language in there, it could pit neighbors against neighbors if if somebody has an issue with somebody, oh, Joe's on his ladder again.
Also, what, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Keith, that's not in the the bylaw we're debating tonight.
No, that'd be more applicable to the boulevard and tree bylaws.
Yeah.
Regulating work on trees or hedges on the boulevard or on a private property. And tonight, the zoning bylaw is really just related to what happens when you're when you're building a new house.
Yeah, I understand that, but as it was in the documentation, I just thought I'd point it out. Thank you.
I'm seeing no, oh, councillor Cassidy.
So Ms. Keith, if this goes forward tonight, would you like its implementation to be immediate? So that we don't see what happened when we brought the former tree bylaw forward and that we saw the tree cutting companies out in force. So would you like this to go forward tonight in the immediate is effectiveness?
But this only impacts redevelopment sites. So I can't imagine that there's anybody sitting tonight, Ms. Keith, and and we can't pass it tonight in any event.
Well, all right. Thank you.
I I mean, for clarification on on that comment, this really is to deal with tree replacements. So it's not to deal with like restricting people from, you know, cutting trees. So there's not really an, I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but there's not an incentive to to.
Rush it.
To rush it because it's really looking at, you know, it's it's better to actually retain trees on your property because then you don't have to plant as many when you're building a new house because you might already be meeting the tree density requirement. So I understand what you mean if there was, if if tonight was debating lowering the tree protection size, which we'll be doing later, then then you're right, you would want potentially a quicker adoption to alleviate that. But in this situation, I don't think that that's as applicable.
Okay, thank you.
I would like now to offer an opportunity to members of the public who came this evening to address council.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. We have five names on the list, four in chamber and one via Zoom. Four in the chamber, start with John Miller, followed by Mary Gamel and Keith Turner and Melinda Slater. John Miller.
Thank you. Oh, please come up, Dr. Miller. We 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 always like to have you as close as possible.
Okay, so my name is John Miller and I lived for twenty five years in West Vancouver. And I'm going to speak tonight, I'll watch the time, about the big picture. And this is the big picture global. And just to, I'm sure you follow this, but perhaps not as closely as I do. We've reached a severe crisis stage globally in climate. And the biggest thing is the ecological crisis, ecological. Situation is that we've we've consumed much of the natural resources of the planet. Close to, they're all being depleted from the air, the water, the ocean, the minerals, and particularly the forests relevant to tonight and many other aspects of our natural resources. The other amongst the minerals or amongst the other things that we're been burning at a great rate is fossil fuels. And as you all know, that has led us to global warming. We've already reached one point six degrees of warming relative to pre industrial times. And that's the stage at which tipping points tip in. And we are facing the prospect of going ahead with greater than three degrees of warming or more. And that means more wildfires, more forests burning, more storms and droughts and floods and, you know, the list. So that we have a deep ecological problem. The other major problem converging with that is inequality. As we have built our economies entrepreneurially and use these resources to make products and sell them, we've created enormous inequity in our societies with the top ten percent of the world's population consuming or taking fifty percent of the income and wealth, leaving very little for those at the bottom. And those inequalities reflected in decreased democracies we're seeing south of the border and leading to poor health, more suicides, depression, more violence, more crime. And it leads to even eventually to to war in some cases. So we've had threats to our sovereignty again from down south. And the potential for wars, there are both conventional and and nuclear. So the scientists that are studying this are saying to us, well, the time has come where the trajectory for human beings is is ending, or life on earth as homo sapiens is under threat. And along with a number of other life species. And and the good news is that there's probably something we can do. We can take another path. The path we are on is leading to termination. But the other path involves restoring and 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 preserving our natural resources. And that brings us to this evening and why I bother to come is because we have to be very careful with the trees on this planet. And I'm happy to see that here the support from this council to say you're going to preserve and enhance our tree coverage in West Vancouver. So I I urge you to to vote in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Doctor. The next.
The next speaker is Mary Gamel, followed by Keith Turner.
Sorry, it's Ms.
Pardon me, Mary Gamel.
Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mary Gamel. A resident of West Vancouver and a member of the Urban Tree Alliance. I am here to support the two amendments to the Urban Forest Management Plan as presented by Ms. Keith and encourage and I encourage mayor and council to do likewise. It will show that West Vancouver is serious about taking steps to maintain its existing tree canopy and natural assets. However, the amendment regarding the minimum density of trees that need to be retained or planted, I feel must be made even more robust to prevent ongoing tree loss and to maintain a valuable tree canopy. New plantings require much water and a great deal of care for their survivability. And there is significant loss even under optimum conditions. Maintaining existing trees is should be the focus as they are more beneficial and cost effective in these times of climate change. Climate change is evident in West Vancouver today, most noticeably by long periods of excessive heat and drought, excessive rainfall, poor air quality and drought stricken trees. The landscaping requirements on developing lots must address these changes, these challenges. The loss of tree canopy leaves residents vulnerable to the effects of climate change. Their health and wellbeing will become impacted over time. But it will be our children and our grandchildren who bear the brunt of our decisions today. I urge you to support the proposed amendments and continue to make them more robust to protect our tree canopy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gamel. Thank you for joining us. The next speaker, please.
Keith Turner.
Mr. Turner, thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Keith Turner and I'm a resident of West Vancouver. I fully support the amendments to the Urban Forest Management Plan as presented by Ms. Keith. The first amendment to establish a minimum density of trees to be retained or planted on development or redevelopment lots is most important. As we move into the fall season, we will start experiencing periods of intense rainfall. We had a reminder of this over the past weekend. We also remember the significant damage that was done in last October, last October's atmospheric river. Trees are known to reduce stormwater runoff and to help mitigate flooding. With the effects of climate change and increasing development or redevelopment of lots, creating a larger percentage of impervious hard surfaces, these mature trees help slow down and reduce the volume of precipitation reaching the ground. This is a significant factor in helping to mitigate stormwater runoff and the peak flow intensity. The role of trees as green infrastructure contributes enormously to the municipality's climate resilience. The landscaping requirements must take into account our changing climate and the properties of those existing mature trees and a healthy tree canopy help mitigate the effects of these extreme weather events and the associated costs that are incurred. So the adoption of the Urban and Forest Management Plan amendments are most important. And I would encourage you to support these bylaw amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. And the next speaker, please.
Melinda Slater.
Melinda Slater. Ms. Slater, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Melinda Slater, ten fifty eight Keith Road. I think the recommended amendments demonstrate a thoughtful approach that balances ecological concerns with practical urban needs. We know there are many benefits to mature trees. They offer privacy, mitigate noise and pollution, provide shade, stormwater capture and wildlife habitat. And we know these benefits are increasingly important as we see the effects of global warming and climate change. The recommendations are reasonable. In fact, I think they don't go far enough and should include the preservation of mature hedges. I particularly appreciate how mature plantings can mitigate the impact of new construction and preserve the character and livability of our neighborhoods. Many of you likely know how invasive new home construction can be for neighboring properties. And if you haven't already experienced this firsthand, you're likely won't be long before you do. The property next door to me used to have a small home and a beautiful garden. And a couple of years ago, it was raised. Every bit of vegetation, every last stick of it was torn out, including a mature laurel hedge. And what followed was a couple of years of construction hell that included multiple collapses of the excavation site and erosion of our yard. And I won't go into the details, but the the point is, had the hedge been retained, it would have offered protection from the excavation work. Our property would have remained intact and it would have provided a buffer to construction dirt and debris. And it would also have served as a visual barrier to the mess and to the blinding reflective white wall that is the side of the new house as well as to the new homes, outdoor lights that are on twenty four seven. The district talks about mitigating and adapting to climate change realities and working alongside residents to shift our thinking and actions towards more sustainable practices. But it's not enough to talk and think about sustainable practices. It's time to put weight behind the words. And unless we implement these recommendations, unless we take some kind of action, nothing will change. And I urge you to support these amendments. They can be monitored and adjusted if if any aspect proves overly onerous or problematic. But I think we need to consider what is the worst thing that can happen if we make these changes? And what is the worst thing that can happen if we don't? Thank you.
Thanks very much. And now I understand we have someone joining us remotely.
Let's correct me, Mayor Sager. I'm just going to promote the resident, I believe a resident, Jay Slater. You should be able to turn on your microphone now, turn on your camera if you wish. You've got five minutes to address council.
Thank you, Mr. Slater.
No relation to the to the previous speaker. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm Jay Slater. I'm a family physician. I work in in Vancouver. I live in North Vancouver. Some of my clinical work involves the most vulnerable in our society. I work in the downtown east side, but I also work with vulnerable frail elders and both of those populations are at extreme risk for you know, for heat and and weather events. So I I come from a place of both clinical concern and also I sit on the Vancouver Coastal Health Planetary Health Committee. I'm a member of Canadian Association of Physicians for the Environment. And I'm the physician lead for the Vancouver Division of Family Practice in their Sustainability and Environment Portfolio. So I was asked by the Urban Tree Alliance to speak about the health effects of of the health benefits of of trees and the tree canopy. And our eloquent speakers to this point have already outlined a lot of the the macro level. You know, issues, a healthy planet obviously is required for healthy individuals. We talked about carbon sequestration that trees can do and the mitigation of 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 carbon dioxide released into the environment, which is a greenhouse gas. Slope stabilization and and shoreline stabilization, which are important, particularly in coastal communities. We talked about shade and the the mitigating factor of the tree canopy in terms of heat stresses, the tree canopy can be shown to eliminate temperatures or to reduce temperatures by as much as five degrees Celsius in in highly treated areas compared to more concrete urban landscapes. And as someone mentioned, trees also filter groundwater, taking up pollution and and managing runoff. On the on the on the personal level, I'm going to sort of go almost system by system in terms of how individuals can benefit from trees and tree canopy in the forests. So most obviously, I guess, is the trees photosynthesize, produce oxygen, which is necessary for life. But they also take pollutants, both particulate pollutants and also gaseous or gas gas pollutants out of the environment. Gases that can be absorbed by trees and taken out of the atmosphere or nitrous oxide, sulfur dioxide, sorry, nitrous dioxide, sulfur dioxide, ozone and carbon monoxide. And of course, we know that that those can be harmful to human health, particularly the nitrous dioxide, which is a strong respiratory irritant and has been associated with a flaring of astmas and in vulnerable people. We also know that trees have had some benefit to people, especially elderly people living with chronic lung disease, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, COPD. In terms of cardiac benefits, urban residents are known to have higher blood pressure levels and psychological stress than than their rural counterparts. This is probably, or it's thought to be related to the stress hormone cortisol. And we have demonstrated that, not me, but the scientists have demonstrated that exposure to trees and forest therapy has been shown to reduce cortisol levels and blood pressure in a meaningful way. The immune system is also benefited by by trees and forests. Being able to see trees demonstrates improved human physiological stress response, as I said. Going back to nineteen eighty four, a paper that was recently reintroduced by the Canadian Medical Association notes the benefit for people recovering from surgery who can see trees out their window. They recover more quickly and their their hospital length of stay is shorter. So hospitals and health facilities are now considering how rewilding the medical facilities with trees and plants can both improve human health, but also somehow mitigate the very large carbon footprint that health facilities have, healthcare system. Pain management seems to be pain tolerance, chronic pain tolerance and issues like fibromyalgia seem to be better tolerated in people who have exposure to to trees.
That's your time, sir.
Sorry?
It's your five minutes, sir.
Are you able to wind up?
Can I, oh, sorry, can I wind up? Sorry, I wanted to get on to the mental health benefits of trees. So there's considerable literature supporting that depression, anxiety, mood are improved by exposure to trees and forests. Levels of anger, hostility, fatigue are decreased as well. Cognitive health, even showing a slowing or reduction in dementia in people that have exposure to trees. Studies from twenty twenty found that people in tree rich neighborhoods have fewer memory complaints and lower dementia risk than those who have no visible trees. And I'll wrap it up. So both physical and mental health benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Slater. We'll take it you're in favor of the.
I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
We have one more name that was just added to the list, Laurie Losh.
Ms. Losh? Ms. Losh? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there anyone else this evening that wishes to address council at this public hearing? I'll call three times. Is there anyone else who wishes to address Mr. Chapman? Thanks for joining us this evening. We don't see you out quite as much anymore.
No, and I said I wasn't going to come up tonight. I'm a landscaper in West Vancouver. My firm's been here, my family, for 138 years. I've only lived in West Van for 34 years. My firm's created over 8,000, over half the lots in West Van. Personally, as a landscaper, I've probably created over 1,000. So my my concerns are not with the trees. I love trees. I want to keep trees. I have saved trees. I've paid to move trees. I have more trees than most of the people in this room because my family has 20 acres of trees. BC Hydro cut down 800 of them, and that was a problem. But they did save 400, and that only cost us about $50,000 to save those. So people think as a landscaper, I want to kill trees. No, I want to live on this planet with healthy trees. As far as this bylaw goes, I have no problem at all saving the trees. I only have a problem with two things. One is the landscape plan. I love landscape plants, have lots of landscape architects I work with, but I would not want to own a lot in West Vancouver where I had to have an approved landscape plan, approved by a landscape architect and approved by West Vancouver. Personal choice, but that would prevent me from building a home in West Vancouver. Our land that I spoke of, we have many gardens. We have no landscape architects. We have many people love what my wife's done and the family's done. And I say I love landscape gardens in other people's lots, but I would not want one for myself. And this bylaw says I would have to. Second one, which I'll keep simple, is a permeable area of 30%. I've created many lots on bedrock in West Vancouver. And at the present time, there is no consideration for bedrock within the bylaws. And I would be happy if you included bedrock as permeable area. I know it's crazy, but the only way I can create lots in West Vancouver is to have bedrock considered as permeable area to achieve the 30% because I have lots with virtually no permeable area other than bedrock or gardens that are created on top of the bedrock within the lots. Caulfield Plateau. I could name an area, but I won't. Well, two areas on the Caulfield Plateau were basically blasted because of the bedrock soil brought in and created permeable areas. But that's not quite the way this bylaw is set up, so. Those are the two points that concern me. I have no problem with the trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Thanks for sharing your experience. Mr. Two, do we have any other speakers?
We have one more name that was just added to the list, Jim Balsheim or Balsheim.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much. I'm a pickleball player, and I wanted to spend a couple of minutes just talking about.
Oh, sorry. No, this is a public hearing, and we're only discussing issues regarding the public hearing.
Yeah, no, that's why I was just checking comments. I'm out of orders, so.
Yeah, no, at the end of our next meeting, which starts in eight minutes.
Yeah, thank you very kindly.
We'll welcome your comments then. Is there anyone else here this evening that is here for the public hearing and wishes to address council on the public hearing? And for a final time, is there anyone else who wishes to address council? Thank you all for joining us. I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing, please. Sorry, Counselor Gambioli.
I'm sorry, but I do have a question related to the last speaker. I just wonder if staff have any comments related to the question of the bedrock and the question of having to have a landscape architect.
Thank you, Ms. Keith.
So through the Mayor Council, Gambioli, with respect to the landscape architect, that is only applicable to the landscape plans required for a building permit application for a new home. That's already been in the bylaw. That's already been effect for as a standard requirement for a building permit application. The zoning bylaw is not applicable to existing properties and what you can and can't do with your landscaping, just to clarify that. In terms of the bedrock as permeable area, I will have to get back to you on that. I don't think I can comment at this point. I would need to speak to our building department in terms of how they look at bedrock in terms of permeable area. I will say for the zoning bylaw amendment, we are requiring that 30% of a lot not have built structures on it. So a house, driveway, walkways, and that sort of stuff that would be maintained in its natural form. That could include bedrock, but again, I'd have to look into that a bit more carefully and could report back on that when we come back for third, second, third reading.
Thank you. I think it would be wise. I think Mr. Chapman raises a fair concern.
But I'm going to suggest that even bedrock is not normally bedrock. It's still got some kind of vegetation on it to begin with, right?
Sometimes. I mean, I, yeah.
Re- replacing that seems fair to me. If you're going to, you know, power wash it and blast it, you got to replace something. Anyway, just a thought.
Thank you. May I have a motion? If members of council are satisfied with the public input, could I have a motion to close the public hearing? Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Watt. I'll call a question. All in favor, contrary carried. So that concludes our public hearing, and I think members of council will just go and get our papers and return very quickly, and we'll start our next meeting. So a moment while we bring different papers. Okay, we're going to begin at six o'clock. We're just picking up after our public hearing. Sorry. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Counselor Gambioli? Oh. She's coming. There we are. Counselor Gambioli, could I get you to move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. And seconded by Counselor Cast. Thank you. And that is, if there was anyone here that was coming to speak on item four, that was a motion that had was brought on by Counselor Lambert, and that has been withdrawn from the agenda. So I'll call a question. All those in favor? Contrary carried. Also, I understand there's some people, because I recognize my pickleball friends there who came because last week I said, come on back in two weeks. I know. Sorry, Counselor Snyder.
Do the agenda, please.
Oh, okay. I called the question, but we'll go back, please.
Ms. Dallas, can you assist me?
Counselor Snyder, I believe, would like to make an addition to the agenda to add the Ambleside Centre Local Area Plan.
Okay, is there a second to that? I can be here for that part. I just can't be involved in the actual discussion of the matter. Is there a second? Oh, that's seconded. Okay, and I'll call a question. That'll be, that'll have to go at the end of the agenda. Okay. All those in favor? Contrary? Well, it's not on the agenda. I can't vote on it. Sorry, we can't have questions on on a motion like that. Sorry, we had an item that was brought on regarding the Ambleside Local Area Plan by Counselor Lambert. He withdrew that item. And that's his choice. It was his motion. Counselor Snyder wished to have a discussion about the Ambleside Local Area Plan, and he asked to move that and add it to the agenda. That was seconded, but the vote was tied. I can't participate in that, in the decision on that, unfortunately, because I have to recuse myself as a property owner in the affected area. And when you have a tie vote, the vote fails. You need to have a majority in favor. So, and I wanted to just go back because I, I'm sorry if I've encouraged a bunch of people to come out on the issue of pickleball. And I guess being the eternal optimist, we are currently in negotiations with BC Hydro on what appears to be a really ideal site. Those negotiations are proceeding, and they're proceeding in a positive way, but they're not completed. So I am sorry you've come out this evening, but I do want you to know we are working very hard on creating a new pickleball facility in the western part of the community. And so now I must go on to item three on the agenda. And thank you, Mr. Hawkins. It'll be your presentation.
Good evening, Your Worship. I believe the screen is showing. Yes, so I'll be providing a presentation to introduce Staff's recommendation for first reading, two updates to councils, official community plans, housing policies. So I'll break this into three pieces. I'll aim to at least summarize the background and what is an evolving context to our work. The middle part will be the more substantial piece, where I'm going to try to tie what we've heard from the public to what we're recommending, be changed in the OCP, and I'll finish with some concluding remarks and staff's recommendation. So in terms of the background and context, I think pretty much everyone I know in the community, councillors I work for and staff, all planners, have been used to a rhythm of reviewing OCPs, which typically occurred around every 15 years. That meant one thing to begin with, that you could really undertake extensive community engagement. West Van's 2018 OCP is a good example of that, two years, hundreds of events, surveys, very deep engagement. It also meant that councils had time to work on significant implementation, which this council and the previous council have been doing with the current OCP. There's some examples on the screen. So in addition to site-specific rezonings, more than 20, also larger-scale initiatives, a local area plan for Horshuvee, which included pre-zoning the neighborhood area. A citizen-led working group, which led to a full rewrite of our single-detached zoning bylaw. The master plan for Cypress Village, also accompanied by rezoning, and the ongoing Ambleside LAP. But obviously, it's only seven years since the 2018 OCP, so there has not been time to complete all of the initiatives it's described. A good example being the Tailaway Local Area Plan. We now find ourselves in a different legislative context. So what is in front of council is in response to changes to the Local Government Act to update the OCP by the end of this year. The mechanism, I believe, council's familiar with, is that provincial legislation now requires a housing needs report every five years, based on provincial data and provincial methodology, to identify twenty-year needs, accompanied the following calendar year, with an O C P update to ensure that that capacity is met. And the cycle is expected, per the legislation, to be ongoing every five years, the rhythm of updating O C Ps. We advised council at the end of last year that the deficit, the unit gap, if you like, between the twenty eighteen O C P and the new housing needs report is around nine hundred years, nine hundred units, pardon me, with the deadline of the end of this year. So what's in front of council, what it does do is it provides updates which would meet compliance with the Local Government Act, and also additionally with the district's five-year housing targets. And I will return at the end of the presentation to the numbers, if you like. But what is not in front of council is an O C P which enacts the three land use directives that were issued to West Vancouver. And this is further to and consistent with council's later on September the fifteenth, staff work view with public servants of this community. And so the O C P in front of you does not establish fixed heights and densities around Park Royal. It does not extend the high-rise apartment area in Ambleside, nor does it force council to adopt the proposed Ambleside L A P which staff have presented to you. What we have done is we've tried to work with the public within this new legislative context. So what's in front of you? We've characterized from the start, this exercise as a refresh. It's not a rewrite. And this is because the twenty eighteen O C P is young. It's only seven years young. Council is using it. And it's the result of extensive public input. So it was important to us to respect its basic planning framework as we go about this work. It was also important to us to reconnect with the community. Council did receive the findings of a survey with good participation response rates in just before the summer. It has been reattached to the staff report, and I'll be summarizing just the key findings and tying them to proposed policy updates. So moving on to that section of the presentation. So for each housing type, we asked the community questions. So beginning with sensitive infill. First question, is there support for this kind of housing? Would people like to see more of it? You can see the results on the screen, whether it be subdivision, coach house, or multiplex. Strong community interest. Through the survey, we also then asked people to help us with specific strategies that would actually enable their interest in seeing more of these kinds of housing. So again, on the screen, you can see the subdivision, good support for the two variables, if you like, which control subdivisions, so lot width and area. Support for enabling stratification of coach houses. Right now, in West Van, they can only be rental. And also support in general to incentivize them with floor area exemptions. Very strong support with respect to multiplexes for triplexes, and also support for fourplexes. There is a full side-by-side comparison document as one of the appendices, where people can see the twenty eighteen O C P and what staff are proposing to be updated. For convenience, I'm just going to use red font for each slide. So black font is existing policy. Red font shows what's been edited or added. So here, we've got very tangible input from the community. If we want to see smaller houses on smaller lots, that's through subdivision. Council can consider reduced lot area or width, and your control would be the subject cited in question, and whether it fits within the neighbourhood in question. Again, very tangible input. We can translate to updated policy from the public for coach houses. So looking at A, if we want to see stratified coach houses, that could be through site-specific applications, and also an update to the zoning bylaw to make that a permitted use. Tied to that, in B, if we're going to allow stratified coach houses, increase the floor air exemptions for rental coach houses, again, when we update the zoning bylaw to ensure some kind of level playing field. Typically, economically, a stratified unit would have higher value. So if you want to also continue to see rental options, then increase the floor air exemptions for that tenure. In terms of multiplexes, again, I'm just going to focus on the red font amendments, or proposed amendments to the O C P. As you'll recall, there was very strong support for triplexes. We're proposing that the zoning bylaw would be subsequently updated should this O C P be approved ultimately. Has an alternative way to achieve three units. So right now, council zoning allows for both a house, a basement suite, and a coach house. So that's three units. We're proposing zoning also allow for a single triplex building to have three units within one structure. There was some interest in fourplexes. At this point, we're only recommending that fourplexes be required, be permitted where they are currently required under the province's small-scale, multi-unit housing legislation. But indeed, that council could consider site-specific rezonings on a case-by-case basis. Moving on to missing middle. So here, we're talking about row houses and townhouses. Very strong support. And then in terms of specific strategies, the two most supported were to update zoning along the broad Marine Drive corridor, but also to identify new locations for townhouses, row houses, not to be limited to that corridor. So we have an existing policy for the Marine Drive corridor, again, focusing on the red changes. Having worked with that policy for a few years now, staff have really found that it's the proposal and the design together that really leads to a better application. And then regarding location, to open this up, the current language is more limiting. It's really about being, for example, adjacent to a bus stop. We might find that it could be a hundred meters away from a bus stop on that corridor, but still be a very good project, still be very appropriate. And then in B, to take a more enabling approach, just to ensure there's a full diversity of housing types that somebody could propose and council could consider. C is perhaps the more substantive piece to this policy update. You'll recall that there was strong interest in actually just updating zoning along Marine Drive. This policy proposes to do that only for lots which were previously duplex, but the provincial legislation has required to be, to allow up to six units by increasing the height from two stories to three stories. In layman's terms, what that really means is that these are sites that council of yesteryear, going back decades, that were appropriate for duplex housing. What the twenty twenty-five O C P suggests is that these same locations would today's age be appropriate for row house forms of housing. And then in terms of responding to the community's interest in not limiting row houses only to the Marine Drive corridor, so an entirely new policy, to acknowledge that there are other, there are other bus routes. There are also things like schools, parks around the district, and that people could come forward with an appropriate development proposal and design based on the site characteristics. Council could consider where is it, the area in question, how it's configured, and whether it's compatible with the neighbourhood context in question. And again, enable a range of housing types, multiplexes, row houses, up to a maximum of three stories. Moving on to apartment forms, similar formats. You can see on the left of screen, broad interest in different types of apartment forms. I'm going to particularly note seniors housing. That was the number-one priority from this engagement with the community. Similar findings in terms of specific strategies. You'll see seniors at the bottom. And for both rental and seniors, I think the community is telling us that they want the province to come to the table, and senior government operators of rental and seniors housing sites to come to the table and to expand on those locations. So in terms of the proposed updates, for mixed use, you'll see the majority of the font is in black. So that hasn't changed. That just reproduces council's existing policy that residential units are appropriate above commercial units at street level to a maximum of three stories, unless there has been a local area plan which actually provides for higher heights than three stories. The addition, indeed, is to acknowledge that there may be other locations where there will not be a local area plan, where it could be that the context, the design, the contribution to housing, and to the local economy, not the regional economy, but the local economy, is actually beneficial for council to consider on their merit proposals above three stories. And then in terms of the seniors and rental, and particularly the seniors, more red font here. The existing policy that's being amended was much weaker. The active verb, I think, was work with nonprofit housing groups, et cetera. So this is really about incentivizing and enabling, whether it's governmental, nonprofit, private, the owners and operators of these sites. I really send that signal, that council will consider site-specific rezoning applications. Your tools are heightened density if we want to see more seniors, or no longer lose seniors housing units in the community. And we also open up the range of options. We may find, for example, that for someone to operate a seniors facility, they do want to include rental units for people who work on-site, for the caregivers. Or we may find, for example, it should be mixed market, that it's the project viability includes for-profit seniors care, which allows them to access things like senior government grants, to then also provide nonprofit care on the same location. And then the final category of housing policies, local area plans. Two slides, and these are very administrative in nature. So regarding the ongoing Ambleside L A P, the map to the right of screen is something council endorsed two years ago, where the local area planning boundary was reduced based on public input, and divided into three streams. And the words on the left simply reflect the current status of those three streams. So the apartment area in blue, council has those policies. It's at the implementation stage. The commercial centre, it's about honoring what's been started, if you like. There's been more than fifty events, so really seeing a plan for the commercial centre to its completion. And for C, the yellow areas, honoring that commitment to work with those different pockets of single-family neighbourhoods on missing middle forms. And then the other L A P, you can see in red font there. This would be retitled from Tailaway L A P to Tailaway dash Park Royal Local Area Plan. This again reflects the direction council provided a couple of years ago, and the map simply expands the boundary to include the north side of the mall and the parcade of Park Royal. What has not been changed, it's been renumbered because of the addition of a policy, is the way we go about preparing L A P. So it's the process itself, which determines the appropriate forms, the exact boundaries, the number of units, and so on, through that technical study and through community input. So I'll make a few concluding remarks. You know, just to recall, our intent here tonight is to commence the process so that council can meet the Local Government Act's December deadline. This has been a summary. As mentioned, there is a comparison document where all proposed amendments can be seen side-by-side with the existing twenty eighteen O C P. I'd also want to signpost that future administrative updates would be required, and obviously, example being that we are a member municipality of Metro Vancouver, so we would require a new regional context statement should the O C P be updated. I'd also want to point out that I've been summarizing what's changed, but the majority of O C P housing policies, we haven't recommended any changes to. This is a refresh. So there are existing policies that council uses, for example, to create new rental and to protect existing rental stock and the tenants within them. Policies around how we go about preparing local area plans, council's ability to consider applications in advance of them, council's ability to consider housing on public lands, and so on. These policies are all still there. Because they're unchanged or not recommended for change, they haven't been included in the PowerPoint. The overall intent here is to give council more opportunities to take action on housing. So these policies, we think, would create more development applications, better opportunities, more locations that council could then consider on merit, but also to direct the preparation of new planning initiatives. Those initiatives would include council direction, public input, our ability to refer to council's planning committee, and so on. I'd also recall that a subsequent O C P review is required by the legislation within five years. So we're not suggesting this is one and done for planning. I'd also recall that council's O C P, it's your document. It's a living document. You can obviously amend it prior to the next twenty, thirty deadline at your discretion. I mentioned I'd return to the math requirements that are now, are now part of the Local Government Act. The middle column sums up the twenty eighteen's existing capacity. And the column on the right, again, using red font, indicates where there have been increases. So for things like infill, missing middle, reflecting what we've heard from the public. The more material change, if you look at the Tailaway Park Royal L A P, from six hundred units to potentially double or triple that, twelve or eighteen hundred units. This new L A P would include an expanded study area. I think it's around fifteen acres or so on the Park Royal site, prime real estate, so we would expect the numbers to go up, but it would be through a process that the actual forms, unit counts, et cetera, would be determined. And then the other significant increase, taking much stronger action on things like seniors and supportive housing. If you add up that, you'll see the figure is arranged at the bottom. I think that's more realistic, recognizing this is a twenty-year plan than picking a specific number. But if you see the footnote, the Local Government Act requirement is for a hyper-specific ten thousand seven hundred and forty-two units, so our ten seven fifty meets the lower rate, is the lower range. It meets compliance. And then the upper range also incorporates the equally specific five-year housing target of fourteen hundred and thirty-two, so around that to fifteen hundred units. So up to twelve thousand two hundred and fifty units. Just, just gonna, sorry, couple more slides. Just gonna recall so that the proposed amendments, they do not embed the three provincial land use directives that West Van has been issued. But I think a big part of council's message is that we are looking for made-in-West Vancouver solutions. We are, we are supportive of housing. What the O C P does regarding the three, the areas of the three directives, it does add Park Royal North to an L A P, but without defining in advance of a planning process, the densities, heights, and so on. It does provide for expanded missing middle in Western Ambleside and Eastern Dundee, but not as an expansion of high-rise apartments. And it does commit to completing the Ambleside Centre Local Area Plan. So the recommendation, similar to all O C P amendments, is that council deemed consultation for this purpose to be sufficient. The bylaw will be read a first time and a public hearing be set with the recommended date of November seventeenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gambioli.
Wow, okay. So I guess my, my question, first of all, is that because the public are not able to ask questions tonight, and what I see is I see a lot of furrowed brows in the audience. Can staff summarize what's going on here in a nutshell? I know, I know Jim is, Jim has got a furrowed brow. I, I, I see a lot of very confused faces out there. This is a lot of information and just big, big picture.
Through the merit of Counselor Gambioli, I mean, I think Mr. Hawkins' presentation.
Can't hear you, Jim. Sorry.
Through the merit of Counselor Gambioli, I think, you know, Mr. Hawkins' presentation does summarize it. It's a complicated issue, and there are many facets of it. In essence, we are updating our official community plan to be consistent with the legislation. That's, that's full stop. We're meeting our housing targets that are associated with it. What we are not doing, and this is, I think, maybe leading to part of the confusion, is the province has, through legislation, said that there's, there's three directives for the District of West Vancouver associated with Ambleside, Park Royal, well, two associated with Ambleside and one associated with Park Royal. These O C P amendments that Mr. Hawkins and staff are recommending do not meet those directives. But in essence, in staff's opinion, the O C P update is, is consistent with our other, you know, legislative and housing need requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. And I, sorry, Counselor Gambioli.
So then imagine that we go to a public hearing, we support, approve this proposed housing policy update, and in the new year, the Ministry of Housing says that they're going to legislate those three directives for us. So those three directives in that case would be on top of all of these other suggested amendments to the O C P?
Through the mayor, that's correct. And it's also in addition to, I think it was two Thursdays ago, Mr. Hawkins, that the province also tabled, introduced legislation for Bill twenty-five that introduces the expansion of the small-scale multi-housing unit legislation. So that would also apply. So you saw, if you can see, remember, Mr. Hawkins' table, that I think it was seven hundred and fifty units that were proposed as part of the small-scale multi-housing unit. That would likely be affected as well, because we would be required by the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, to have amended our zoning bylaw, to have that legislation apply to all, you know, relevant properties in the District of West Vancouver. So it would be an additive thing. What Mr. Hawkins' presentation is saying is that a made-in-West Vancouver approach could meet our housing targets and our housing needs. That's, that's our, that's our opinion. The additional directives would go above and beyond that.
I would just like to say to everyone that's here this evening, some of you may have seen a letter which I penned to the minister. I guess it was about a month ago. And then many members of council, we met with the minister during the recent Union of B C Municipalities meeting in Victoria. Actually thought the meeting went rather well, but I received a letter end of last week, which I will circulate and make very public. And I would describe the, how would I best describe the letter, other than frankly insulting? And the directives that are coming out of Victoria have caught the attention of municipalities in every corner of this province. And I expect you will hear in the next two weeks a concerted pushback. But I'll give you one example. The mayor of Surrey advised us on Friday that to meet the targets that the ministry suggests Surrey should, or by implementing the changes that the province wished to see brought in, would result in close to a billion dollars in capital expenditures needed to, to do with their ordering. As a result of my letter, which was sent out to every community in British Columbia, we got responses from places I'd never even heard of before. we got responses from places I'd never even heard of before, that you would think, why would they care? But municipalities across this entire province care and are deeply offended by this government's approach to the most fundamental of municipal services and undertakings, and that's proper land use planning. We're very fortunate in West Vancouver, we have people like Mr Hawkins and Mr Bailey, who are extremely good at what they do. And there is no replacement for proper study and work as the province has proposed. But I'll have a lot more to say on this, I expect, in the next week. At this time, I'll call on councillor Lambert if you'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Sager. Just before I do, I just want to reiterate with Mr Hawkins, Mr Bailey have both said that this is a made-in-West Van approach to a legislative requirement imposed on us by the province. And the purpose of this is to refer this to a public hearing. So on that, I'll begin with the first recommendation, that opportunities for consultation on the proposed official community plan amendment as outlined in the report regarding housing policy update officially, official community plan amendment bylaw introduction dated October first, twenty twenty-five, be endorsed as sufficient consultation for purposes of section four seven five of the Local Government Act.
Thank you, councillor Gambioli.
Yes, I'll second that, although I do have a question. Just relates to what are the opportunities for consultation other than, what were the opportunities other than just this being on the agenda?
Mr Hawkins?
A three worship to councillor Gambioli. If you recall the middle portion of the presentation, I was intending to directly tie what the community has told us to red font amendments that are, I believe, a very honest reflection of what we've heard people would like to see updated.
Right, okay, thank you.
Councillor Thompson.
I just wanted to make the comment that I really appreciate this approach and solution-oriented housing opportunities that we really do need and look for in the community, so I think this is terrific work, thank you.
Any further discussion, I'll call a question, all in favour, contrary, the motion is carried. Thank you, councillor Lambert.
Sager, recommend that proposed official community plan bylaw number four nine eight five twenty eighteen, amendment bylaw number five four zero six twenty twenty-five be read the first time.
Thank you, councillor Gambioli. Any discussion, call a question, all in favour, contrary, carried, and finally councillor Lambert.
And finally, that proposed official community plan bylaw number four nine eight five twenty eighteen, amendment bylaw number five four oh six twenty twenty-five be presented at a public hearing on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at four PM in the municipal hall council chamber and via electronic communication facilities, and that notice be given of the scheduled public hearing.
Thank you, councillor Gambioli. And the comment, let's move to the second.
Yeah, so I just, first of all, I just want to thank staff for the presentation. I realize it's going to a public hearing, but this is really complicated, and I know our staff have just had their, you know, noses to the grindstone on this, so thank you. In this changing sort of housing landscape, it's really difficult. But I really am concerned about the, you know, the province moving forward with the directives after January. The mayor referred to the most recent letter we received from the minister, who basically says that if the district does not implement the directives, that we are forfeiting the opportunity to further influence the local context in the directives and relying on the province to complete the implementation. Anyways, it goes on, but it's a pretty assertive letter, and, you know, those are my concerns. Having said that, you know, I think that you've really, we've checked all the boxes with sensitive infill and with the missing middle and the apartments and removing the dial a lot. So, but it doesn't exactly meet the directives. So anyway, I am a bit concerned about the timing and, you know, how soon we could get a plan created after the new year anyways.
Thank you, councillor Gambioli. Concerns, I think we all share, councillor Thompson.
Pretty much what I was going to say, I think we do all share the concerns, I particularly do too. But I think this is a great way of addressing them because, well, I believe the province has the right intention to provide housing. I don't believe they truly understand the uniqueness of each community and what each community needs to have a quality of life. And it's really important for this council to demonstrate what we can do responsibly for our community and our quality of life and still meet the targets. So I'm very pleased with the direction we're taking, and I think the timeliness couldn't be better.
Nicely said, thank you. Any further discussion, I'll call a question, all in favour, contrary, carried, thank you. Item number five, cost recovery model for servicing historical grinder pumps on private property. This was, took quite a bit of discussion, councillor Cassidy.
There's a presentation to provide.
Ms Muller, are you planning on a presentation on this? I do believe all members of council have read the report. I would only be really for the benefit if there's anybody here tonight in the audience on the grinder pump issue. This does sound like you've come up with a great resolution. Councillor Cassidy, I'm not seeing anybody on that issue, so I think we're good to move ahead.
Would you like me to, I guess I will read in its entirety. Recommend that the report from Director Engineering Transportation Services dated October the sixth, twenty twenty-five entitled Cost Recovery Model for Servicing Historical Grinder Pumps on Private Property be received for information.
We'll do that as the first motion, councillor Gambioli. Discussion question, all in favour, contrary, carried, next.
Recommend staff be directed to proceed with developing a fee-for-service model that provides for reinstatement district servicing of historical municipal-maintained grinder pumps benefiting private property owners on a cost-recovery basis. Two, staff be directed to prepare proposed policy and supporting procedures that provide for district servicing on a fee-for-service cost-recovery basis. Three, staff prepare applicable amendments to the District of West Vancouver Sewage and Drainage Regulation bylaw number fifty-two sixty-three twenty twenty-three that allows for reinstatement of servicing of historical municipal-maintained grinder pumps benefiting private property owners on a cost-recovery basis. And four, staff report back in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six with an update on council direction, including proposed policy and supporting procedure and proposed bylaw amendments for council's consideration.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy, councillor Gambioli. Thank you, and I'd just like to thank staff for working on this. This was a grinding issue, and I think you've come up with a, looks like a very fair and good resolution, so thank you. I'll call a question, all in favour, contrary, carried, thank you. Item number five, proposed fees and charges bylaw, councillor Gambioli.
Just while she's getting the recommendation ready, just to let you know, one member of the public has signed up to speak to this item.
Thank you, this is a motion to reduce the Ambleside parking fees. Okay, do you want to hear from the members of the public first, or put the motion out first?
That's a good idea.
Okay, who would like to address council?
The two names I have on the list are David Jones followed by Maureen O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr Jones, where are you? There you are, nice to see you, sir. Front and centre, thanks for joining us this evening.
David Jones, resident of Ambleside, business owner of Ambleside. We were here two Mondays ago on October sixth and trying to describe the problems that pay parking in Ambleside have caused for Ambleside businesses. And I've been informed now that we're looking at a price reduction of two dollars and fifty cents plus tax per hour.
Sorry, I think it's actually two dollars and fifty cents including tax. No, plus tax. Right, it's including tax, but there's, because the service charge only goes on the first hour, right?
However, I, just from a common sense perspective, as the business area is concerned, you can have two fifty an hour to park in Ambleside Park, or you could park in the commercial business area for free for as long as you want. I kind of, you know, I'm thinking like, the problem's not going to go away, and what Maureen O'Brien suggested on Monday, October sixth, why don't we just look at a moratorium, let's stop the pay parking till after the new year, when our businesses have the December and November months, which is Christmas time, which is the majority of our business. Why don't we allow the park to just have anyone come park in it until January, and by which time we could have a look at the situation and find a solution that would work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Jones. Ms O'Brien.
Hi, I'm Maureen O'Brien, Ambleside Dundre BIA. First of all, let me thank you all for considering the reduction in the hourly rate. It's appreciated. I also want to thank members of council that walked around to see for themselves. I saw some of you out there myself, and I've had our businesses tell us they've seen you out there as well. So for those of you that have taken the time to go look at the situation, it's appreciated and acknowledged. As Mr Jones said, two fifty is still not free. They're still going to park in our commercial area for free. It's just, it's been a month now and they're used to it. I drive through the park almost every day. It's a sunny day, it's a rainy day, there's generally anywhere from six to ten cars parked there. A lot of them are parked right at the entrance, which I assume are West Van residents who are working in our commercial area. But further into the park, it's usually quite quiet. I have looked at parks from Lions Bay to Abbotsford, there's no parks like Ambleside. I know they compared some, there's none that have all the qualities Ambleside have and is a two-minute walk to the commercial area. I think I sent council the spreadsheet that I put together of just lower, close parks. I've also heard some mention that it's the economy and it's the tariffs that are having the impact on the lack of sales and the decrease in revenue for our businesses and foot traffic. But I've asked other businesses within our boundaries and they're not seeing the same impact as Bellevue and Marine Drive. But even if it was the tariffs and it was the economy, we can't do anything about that. But this, people around this horseshoe, they can make a difference in the next two months for our businesses. You guys are the only ones that can make that decision to pause this until after the holidays to give our businesses a fighting chance this Christmas with Park Royal with five thousand parking spots and the convenience of online shopping. We all know it's far too easy. So you seven people are the only ones that can make a difference to our businesses, no one else can. Anyhow, that's, I think that's all I want to say. On the subject, you know how we feel, we've asked for it time and time again. If you could please just look at pausing this till at least after Christmas, and I'm happy to work with staff on solutions moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms O'Brien. Just so members of the public are aware, in anticipation that this may pass this evening, because if it doesn't pass, then the existing rates would stay because it's set by a bylaw. I have called for a special meeting on Wednesday this week at three PM, I believe it is, at one PM in order to pass this so that the rates could become effective immediately. Is there any discussion? Councillor Thompson.
Yes, thank you. Have we got the motion on the table?
Oh, sorry, no, councillor Gambioli, yes, we should put the motion on the table.
Sure, I'll make the motion as written.
I'll second it. And I do support the reduction in rates, certainly do, it's a start. But I have to say that I agree that, actually, I want to start by saying I support pay parking in Ambleside. I think it's the direction we're going, the direction we need to go for sustainability in our own community and managing. But it is an incredibly complicated site. And I actually agree that this should be paused until the new year when the, you know, the lowest hanging fruit, we were able to muster and lower the rate, and that's great. But there's so much more work we can do with our community passes. It's the business areas over Christmas, our sports fields are up and running and as vibrant as ever, it affects them. It affects the volunteers in our community, the employees. It's just, I don't think it's good enough just to reduce the rate. I think we should pause it, and when we can come back with all the solutions, the plan for parking in the business district at the same time and implement it together, it's going to be clunky, it's going to be an adjustment for people coming to visit our community, but we'll have a better sense of its true impacts if we put it in altogether. So I'm disappointed that we're just doing the fee reduction, and I will continue to advocate for a pause if at all possible.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Any further discussion, councillor Watt?
So I agree with the fee reduction at this point, but what I would have liked to see in this is a cap, a time limit and reduced hours. I'm prepared to support this, but I really would have liked to see greater support and greater discussion for those two items. And the consideration of an annual pass for employees working in the businesses.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy.
In the immediate, I think what needs also to be done is that the parking along Bellevue, which is currently two hours, that it be reduced to one hour. If somebody is shopping along those streets, they can be in and they can be out when having had their business done, and they're having a coffee at Crema, they can have that too within the course of an hour. Most of the people who are coming along Bellevue are parking there and they're going on the seawall, they're walking it or they're spending all day in the summertime on the beaches. The reduce the parking time along Bellevue to one hour, and that will begin from assistance with this problem.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy, and I would encourage the ADBIA, Ms O'Brien, who wants to address this again, all right, to actually look at and give us some advice.
So I would love to meet with your new parking person, I've been asking for that. I want to work with them, but I haven't been reached out on anything since we met with them when they were bringing forward their recommendations. So I thought working with the BIA meant that they would work with us, but I haven't had any communication or meetings with them since they met with Tim, our board chair, and I to talk about the study, the overflow or the spillover and what their recommendation is going to be.
Well, I certainly know that members of council will encourage our staff, and I actually thought that they had met, Ms-
Through the mayor to, I guess, Ms O'Brien. Yeah, happy to follow up after this meeting, I understand there's been several meetings with staff. And so anyways, let's just connect up and meeting.
Yeah, yeah, because I do, I would like to look at reducing to Bellevue to one hour, I think that would help. I've long said, and you can go back to the engineering notes, because I've talked to Sean O'Sullivan about that, perhaps making the streets that are east-west one hour and north-south two hours. So if you are getting your hair done or your nails done and something's a little bit longer and you need two-hour parking, there's that option. I also would like to see Argyle reduced, Argyle is three hours, it's free all day Sunday. So you could park on Argyle on Saturday afternoon at three o'clock and not move your car till noon on Monday. So that's too long as well. So I want to relook at all of the parking, but I need support and to work with staff. It's not something that I think the BIA itself should just come forward, I think it has to be collaborative, the same as it is with the parking in the park.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate your insight and help with this rather tricky issue. And certainly my observation is that there was the thirteen-hundred block of Marine Drive in Bellevue was the hardest hit by the implementation of the pay parking in the park. Maybe this reduced rate will ease that a bit. But we would be grateful for your input, I'm going to go to councillor Watt.
I'm wondering if the mover and securer would be open to a friendly amendment to reduce the hours to nine to six or seven.
No, it's, sorry.
Pardon me, through the mayor to councillor Watt, and I think your sort of follow-up comments, Ms O'Brien clarified in my mind. So you're not talking about meeting with staff, you're talking specifically about discussions around- You're talking specifically about discussions around strategic mitigation and measures that would primarily focus on hourly restrictions to help encourage turnover in the commercial areas in the business business area. And and staff are working on and have direction from council on that. So it will certainly follow up with you. And our end receipt that, you know, I know Sean has has been working with some of the other staff involved in the programming and they're closely collaborating in terms of taking those suggestions into consideration. We'll circle back before we come forward. I think it's later this month that we're so.
Any staff since whatever the the spillover study came at the early September. So I think it was late August we met with with Emily and Stephen. That's the last time I've met with any staff.
Okay, and and they've been, okay, thank you.
Yeah, but we can follow up. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. This is a work in progress. And I think with a bit of patience, we'll get the right answer. Counselor Watt. Sorry, your mic's still on.
Oh, I can shut it off.
Okay.
So, yeah, just just because we're on the topic now. I just was confused by an article in the paper about the farmer's market. And I really felt that what what the information I had was very different from what I heard and read in that article. So could staff just be clear with the public and the media and us about what's going on with the farmer's market? Because I had never, I have never heard anything other than we've been trying to help them. And that's not the impression I got from what their people are saying. So can we just get some clarification?
Thank you, Ms. Cutler.
Yeah, thank you, through the merit of Counselor Gambioli. So staff have been working with the farmer's market. And there's been an agreement reached that they will be able to park their vehicles within their footprint for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. The organizer has a concern that if the market were to grow, there might not be room. And we have said we will discuss that with them if the market reaches the point where the vehicles for the vendors, excuse me, wouldn't fit. So that was that was made clear to the organizer. There was a visit on site. The actual contract has not been signed for twenty twenty-six because we don't do that typically until after the twenty twenty-five farmer's market season ends, which is the end of October. So they've agreed to meet in November to begin those discussions. But from a staff perspective, we absolutely had confirmed with the farmer's market that sort of current practice was going to continue in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
Thanks very much.
That's that's good to hear. That's good to hear. And I also just heard somebody mention an annual pass. So that's being considered as well, possible annual pass for the park. Not the farmer's market, but I'm talking about anybody who's not a resident who would want to buy an annual pass for the park. That's something that's being considered, that's been floated.
Through the merit to Counselor Gambioli. So staff received direction, I believe it was October seventh, to look into a community pass. And so we'll be coming forward with that, we anticipate, at a meeting in November.
Okay, so community pass is the same as an annual pass.
Yes.
Endless purpose, okay, okay.
Not totally. It depends on what council directs and approves. But anyways, we'll be here later in the next month to discuss that.
Coming back, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson, please.
Well, I just wanted to comment on this, all this discussion around these piecemeal solutions. It really takes me back to, you know, we we've had lots, there's been a lot of discussions around time limits to parking, types of passes, seasonal, all the stuff's on the table. And my point is, let's work it out, let's make a plan and let's implement it all in January when we have the plan. Because it takes a process, it's not just the decision to do it.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Cassidy.
I would also like to reiterate for all those people who are not following this conversation, wherever they are, the West Vancouver nights are free. So please register your car online. If you can, please come into the district hall and and they'll help you. And register your car. All the issues we're currently discussing do not apply to West Van residents because they're free. Okay, so please register your car. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. And we have seen an enormous uptake. Do you know what the most recent number is?
Yes, I I got an update last week. There's was thirty-three hundred permits issued in in the recent, about the last month, five weeks.
So people are getting the message and they are taking up that opportunity. Seeing no further discussion, I'm going to call a question. All in favor, contrary, the motion is carried. And we'll go to item number six, the five year financial plan final adoption. Counselor Snyder, please.
The proposed five year financial plan bylaw, number five three eight one, twenty twenty-five amendment, bylaw number five four zero three, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Thank you, Counselor Lambert, please. Discussion, question, all in favor, contrary, carried, thank you. Item number seven, the permissive tax exemption, Counselor Watt, please.
Yep, I'd like to recommend that the proposed twenty twenty-six permission, permissive tax exemption bylaw, number fifty-three eighty-two, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Thank you, Counselor Lambert. Thank you, discussion, question, all in favor, contrary, carried, thank you. Fees and charges by law, excuse me, Counselor Thompson.
I'd like to recommend that the proposed fees and charges by law, four three three four, twenty twenty-four amendment, bylaw number four, five four zero eight, twenty twenty-five, and proposed fees and charges by law, number five three eight three, twenty twenty-five, amend by law, number four, five fours, one one, twenty twenty-five, be adopted.
Thank you, Counselor Snyder. Discussion, question, all in favor, contrary, carried, thank you. Development procedures by law, Counselor Watt.
My apologies.
Number nine.
Yep. I didn't see my name on it, but happy to move that. I would like to recommend that the proposed development procedures by law, number forty-nine forty, twenty seventeen amendment, by law, number fifty-four oh seven, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Any discussion, question, all in favor, contrary, carried, thank you. On the consent agenda, all items with the exception of eleven point five, we'll pull that one item. May I have a motion, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that the consent agenda be approved as follows or as written.
Thank you, Counselor Snyder. Discussion, all those in favor, contrary, carried, Counselor Watt. Did I ask you to read out at number eleven point five?
So I would like to recommend that the following proposed appointments of council representative for a term of January first to December twenty-third be approved with the amendments that the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee would be Counselor Gambioli and Counselor Cassidy. Community Grants Committee, Counselor Snyder. I remain on the Public Art Advisory Committee. And by Counselor Watt, on the North Shore Standing Committee on Substance Use.
So.
Replacing Counselor Cassidy.
So it's clear, we do have, so those are amendments to what's written in.
To eleven point five, yes.
So you'll, you're moving eleven point five as written with those.
With those amendments.
With those amendments. Counselor Snyder, will you second that? Okay, is everybody happy with those changes? I'll call a question, all in favor, contrary, carried. And thanks to all of you for your willingness to sit on all of these different bodies. Much appreciated. Are there any reports from? I I would just like to make a quick comment that on Thursday last week, I attended as the vice chair of Metro Water at the, quite a unique opportunity. I was invited to go in the newly constructed tunnel underneath the Fraser River between New Westminster and Surrey. And I've got to tell you, it was a real experience. It was, the tunnel goes sixty meters underneath the river. We were lowered down in a construction elevator and then taken two and a half kilometers under the river. I think a few people who were with us might have begun, were beginning to get a little claustrophobic as we spent that much time under the rapid moving river above us. But I have to tell you, it's a an impressive undertaking, delivered on time and on budget by Metro Vancouver, supplying world class water to residents south of the Fraser. And it, you know, we hear a lot of talk about Metro because they happen to have contracted with one rogue contractor, did not perform on something dear to our hearts. But when you see how well this has been implemented, you can't help but be impressed. And honestly, I wish everyone here, there, I wish there was an opportunity for everyone to see what I saw was really quite something. Any other member of council who wish to bring anything forward? If not, can I have a motion to receive my little report? Move and second it, all in favor, contrary, carried. And are there any public questions this evening, Ms. O'Brien?
That it is Small Business Week this week, started yesterday until the twenty-fifth. So I would appreciate, since you are not going with our recommendation to pause pay parking, to please go out and support our local businesses, pay them a visit. I went out on last Friday with Patrick Wyler and we visited businesses in Dunderay, which is still within his boundaries. So it was great for the businesses to be able to talk to him directly and share their concerns. Most of their concerns, we were municipal, but he listened. So I encourage all of you to do the same and go out and listen to the businesses firsthand rather than from me about what their concerns are and then support them in the meantime. And we do have one official grand opening tomorrow at.
I knew you were going to say that.
Yeah. At the, at Grayden's Cheese Shop, she's having her official opening tomorrow between twelve and three. And I believe the mayor is going to be there to cut a ribbon. And so you're all invited to come to that as well. And then you can support the businesses and there should be parking for all of you in Ambleside Park.
There will definitely be parking for all of us. The ribbon cutting, I think, is at at one o'clock. And if you haven't been, it's a lovely little shop. And it's lovely, it's great to have them there. Ms. O'Brien, thanks for organizing and encouraging her to move to West Vancouver. I know you had a lot to do with that. Counselor Gambioli, please.
Yes, sorry, I am remiss. I should have mentioned that it's Small Business Week because I am the council liaison to the ADBIA, so thank you. And my new favorite business is a little Persian bakery right across from the Dollar Store and Starbucks on Marine Drive at like seventeenth there. It's called Gang Doom Bakery. And and the gentleman makes fresh bread twice a day. And he makes these sort of Persian baguettes and they are really amazing. And they only cost two dollars each. It's the best deal in town. And so I highly recommend, that's my new, that's my new place to go for fun. And it's just a little hole in the wall. That's what we need, more of those local spots, so.
I think Ms. O'Brien would agree with you entirely.
Thanks, everybody.
Counselor, sorry, we have somebody else who wishes.
We do have one member of the public that did sign up to speak to this item, Jim Belson. Belson again, there we go.
Oh, there we are, yes, he came at the earlier part, wants to talk about pickleball. He's going to encourage us all to come out and join him all that.
Oh, my name's Jim Belson. I'm a resident of Gleneagles, a little block and a half from the Gleneagles Community Centre. We've talked about pickleball in a couple, a couple of council meetings. And I, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the work done by the mayor, council and staff on getting new courts out in the Gleneagles area. So that will resonate very well with the community. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I wanted to just take this quick opportunity to talk about a couple of of facts that we haven't emphasized in the past in conversation of pickleballs. One is demographics. And the sec, and the second one is to talk about the rotational play style, which is used on the, on the west side of West Vancouver. And it's extremely beneficial to community development. So first of all, demographics. We all have heard that pickleball is fastest growing sport in North America. It's a fad everywhere. Councils right across North America are building pickleballs responding to the need. What isn't talked about as much is the average age is of pickleball players is 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 dropping significantly. So a lot of this growth comes from younger people. To the, the fact that startled me was the average age, according to the Pickleball Association, in the U S is now thirty-five years old. And in Canada, it's reported at forty. Canadian figures, I don't know, have a reliable source, so that might be an estimate. But what it's showing is that this pickleball thing is for many members of the community at age groups, at different age groups. And and one of the neat things, I call them the Westsiders, style of playing pickleball is rotational play. So essentially, you show up, you immediately get in the queue and you're, and you go on as soon as your spot comes open. You don't need a group, single person, coupled, whatever can show up. And what that does is it, it, it means you'll be playing with different people. And and it's created a very welcoming structure, very tolerant of different skill levels, different pays, different ages. You play your one game, then you step off and go back in the queue. So in your second game, you'll be playing perhaps with a, well, you will be playing with some different players. So it becomes very social.
That's your time, sir.
That's okay, we can have a, you can wind it up. I don't think anyone's after you.
Okay, I'll, I will put it with gusto. So so pickleball not only provides our community with with exercise, with fun and things, it also tackles that social isolation issue that's in all communities. It's worse in seniors. But it, but it applies to all groups, it applies to ethnic, different ethnic groups. And what's magnificent about the rotational play concept is everything's mixed up and all those groups bind together. So I applaud counsel for, for looking at this. And it would be fair for me to say that there's still some anxiety because I don't know the information the mayor shared today. But anyway, again, thank you very much.
Well, I, just so it's really clear, council gave direction to staff to to meet with Hydro to see whether there'd be a willingness to utilize some leftover property that they have. And without getting into too many details, Hydro came back with a yes, not a no. And so now it's going through various stages of what does that look like?
Okay, that's encouraging.
It's varying, and it's a, it actually turns out, we have had a contractor out to look at preparing the site. And it really is a fabulous spot. So we're optimistic. Counselor Thompson.
So I just had a story, an anecdotal story to share with you. I I have three children who are young adults now. And I've never been able to compel them to come out and play golf with me or tennis with me. And we do lots of other great things together, but not those sorts of sports. So this summer, I bought four rackets and some balls and on my birthday insisted that they come play. And they actually dragged me out to the courts. And my thirty year old with her husband have now formed a weekly rotational pool that they play with about twenty of their friends every week. So we are bringing the age down.
Wonderful, that's great.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address council this evening and failing that? Oh, yes, madam, please come forward. This is lovely. Hello?
If someone does not listen and then they don't do something that they're supposed to do, what would happen then?
If someone.
Guys talk about amending this bylaw and amending that bylaw. She asked, well, what happens if people don't listen to your amendment?
It wouldn't pass. Yeah, there'd be a vote. So at this table, you must get four out of seven people to put their hands up in favor. So if somebody doesn't listen or doesn't agree, as long as four people agree, then it moves forward. Okay, thanks for coming this evening. That's wonderful. Counselor Cassidy, please.
I recommend that the October 20, 2025 regular council meeting be adjourned.
Thank you, is there a second or Counselor Gambioli, Counselor Snyder? Call a question, all in favor, contrary, carried. Thanks very much, everyone, for joining us this evening. And members of council, we have to go back in camera.